Good evening, this is the City Council Meeting of June 15, 2015. If you'd stand with me for the pleasure of leaving.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Thank you. Item two, the approval of the agenda. And I think there's...
On item seven F, I would like to suggest we pass over that one. As a member in planning permission, we've got further work to do on it, so if we could strike that, I would appreciate it.
All right. Second, strike my...
I'm second, man.
All right. Thank you. All in favor of striking item F?
Yes.
Any opposed? Good. Any other additions, corrections, changes, postponements?
All for approval of the agenda as modified.
I move in second to approve the agenda as modified. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Then we have previous meetings of June 1st, regular meeting. Things are in the packet.
I move that we approve the minutes of the June 1st meeting as presented.
I will second.
And move in second to approve the minutes of June 2nd, or June 1st, rather. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of the accounts payable, they're in our packet also.
My good question. And I don't know, sorry to put you on the spot, but on the library rugs, that filling, do you know was that for cleaning or was it repair? And are we, I know we're responsible for some things, but are we responsible to pay for the rugs?
They, they like that when they switch them on, it's modeled at all.
Okay. So they're like the entrance ones that people, and the city provides that, that doesn't come out of the library?
The city provides that.
I guess I've never understood that before. Thank you for finding that. I guess I would move to approve the accounts payable as presented.
I'll support it. And move in second to pay the accounts payable as they are presented to us. And for this, we need a roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. And item five, citizen comments for items that do not appear on the agenda, so if any citizen would like to address the council, this would be the time to do it. Okay. Move on to all business, strategic goals report. Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Two items on the strategic goals report. One under number four, street asset management plan. We started mapping the community streets and we'll put together a priority list of potential street projects for your review during the workshop. You talked about me having that too, you in the office. That'll be the plan there. And then on inflow and infiltration mitigation, pool monitors and groundwater monitors are being pulled this week and Prime New Office is going to begin compiling the data. And we actually got them to hold up for another week and with the rain event that we had this week, I think we had some good data. That's what's going on there and that's it on strategic goals.
All right. And any council projects?
Any council projects? Downtown tower removal is item on your agenda. And on minus wholesale, we settled with ProAmerica and made a final payment to the company of $40,000, which reflects the total into them minus our expenses. And this project is now called and completed.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, though?
Nothing else.
Okay. Here we go. Item seven, I might just preempt this. I've served on the city council a number of years. I think, don't think I've ever seen more than five items on new business. Maybe there were six. But you've thought on yourself, Mr. Hall, there are 11, now 10. So anyway, here we go. Item F, public hearing, truth and taxation. Take it away.
We have posted a notice for you to hold a truth and taxation hearing. You'll need after my brief explanation, you'll open the hearing and take citizen comments before closing the hearing. And basically, the state law requires that we publish a notice that has things like notice of public hearing and increasing property taxes and proposed additional millage. Those are requirements in the state law, but we're not proposing any property tax millage increase for this year. The charter, just to talk about the military a little bit, the charter authorizes 20 mils. And through the, what are called heavily rollback, that authorized the military rate has actually been reduced to 17.4597 mils. The council has allocated a millage rate of 15.7 mils, so that the amount that's allocated by the council is a whole 10% less than what you could allocate. In fact, I'll mention that a couple of years ago, the military rate was reduced for the first time, I think we said in 30 years, the first time the military rate was reduced. The purpose of the hearing really is, and I think Dick Montt put it best, he said that it's a hearing to let the public know what you have the power to do, not necessarily what you intend to do, even though the notice talks about a proposed military increase and that kind of stuff. So that's essentially it. Once you hold the public hearing, unless there are comments otherwise, my recommendation to you is going to be adopt a resolution that authorizes the current military at 15.7 mils.
Thank you for the background. And this time, we will open the public hearing. So if any citizen would like to address the council concerning this taxation, you're welcome to do so. Please launch your comments to about five minutes. Okay. Guess not. So we'll close the public hearing and open up for any council comments.
Maybe if I can clarify one thing, I said 17.7, that's the charter authorized the millage, but you also have the voted, I'm sorry, museum millage that is, .2424, which is something that you also need to authorize. But that's the same as last year.
No change.
No change.
All right. Councilmembers. Third motion.
I move that we approve Resolution 815, keeping the city operating millage the same as before.
I will second.
And move in second to approve the resolution for the millage rate. And as a resolution, a roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Item B, fireworks for River Walk.
The next two items have to do with River Walk. The Executive Director of the Lowell Area Chamber of Commerce is here to answer the questions that you might have, but these are things that we do on a annual basis. First is fireworks. Annually, we have fireworks during River Walk Festival. This year's fire...
Fireworks.
Fireworks.
Fireworks. River Walk.
River Walk. Fireworks. Absolutely should come to the light. Fireworks during the River Walk. This year, it will be on July 11. I'm training them. They will be on July 11, launched from Stony Lakeside Park. And I believe this year's sponsor is still, we ought to plug in for them, is still the Morals of Kent. And we're certainly grateful to the sponsor for hosting the fireworks. But it does require a council approval. And so that's what's before you and it's recommended that you approve it.
All right.
I move that we approve the request from Lowell Chamber to have the fireworks display on Saturday, July 11.
I will second.
And move in second to approve the fireworks for Saturday, July 11. And all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We'll go down.
Great.
Item C, River Walk. River Walk. Festival Street disclosure request.
I will attempt to cover that one as well. And again, this is a street closure request during, or for the River Walk Festival, primarily for car show. And I think we've done some great success in having the car show along the, along every street and some of these other streets. I'm not going to read through the recommended motion. I'll allow you to do that because I might mispronounce one of the streets as Non-Neverton or something like that. But at any rate, it's outlined there, the street closures and recommended to council approval this.
We're supposed to be done with our construction project, right? So we don't have any people not being able to cut through.
Which construction project?
The Hudson Street Bridge.
Hudson Street Bridge is on schedule.
Okay.
So last I was told, it's on schedule, which will be July 2nd. We, it's in my manager's report, I did mention that we are doing some contingency planning in case they don't make that schedule, thinking, well, how to handle traffic and things like that. Chief Buclow is giving us some thought.
I was just wondering if this would be closing. We'd have to detour around this. I mean, I know I use it as a back door.
We would change the parade route and community issue.
Okay. Thank you. I move that we approve the request from the Lowell Area Chamber to close Avery Street on July 11 for the River Walk Festival.
I will second.
And move in second to honor the chamber request to close the streets. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Item D, FOIA policy review and approval.
A draft was presented at your last meeting for your review. These are procedures and guidelines that were developed by City Attorney that are in accordance with changes in state law and the Freedom of Information Act. The only update is that we calculate the actual cost of making copies and published of that would be seven cents. And other than that, definitely is the same as it was when it passed out of the trust in hand.
Ready?
Yeah.
I will totally adopt the Freedom of Information Act procedures and guidelines.
They've been supported to adopt the procedures for the Freedom of Information Act. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I'm sorry. Okay. Ordinance E for site plan review. And this is for...
The Planning Commission, I will say kudos to them. They've been very active over the past year. You know, the mixed use ordinance has come before you and that's now completed and you've got a couple of things on your agenda tonight. And the Soudor Tower, which was on the agenda, but that still needs a little bit more discussion of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has done a very good job of walking through some of these things and asking very good questions. And so we're, the city is in very good hands with the Planning Commission right now. In this, on this particular ordinance amendment for site plan review, what happens is that there may be a change, an individual will buy a commercial building, they will want to change the use of the building, that requires a site plan review. And it also requires them, the way the ordinance was, or is right now, I should say, to come before the Planning Commission and go through an entire process, even if the use is permitted by right. I think that's the key, is that the use is already permitted, they're meeting all the requirements in zoning ordinance. And so we had a discussion about how can we streamline the process and make it easier for people who are buying a building and they're going to use it in a way that's permitted by the ordinance, and can we just streamline that and approve those site plans administratively as long as they're meeting requirements in zoning ordinance? And the Planning Commission agreed to that. They held a public hearing and they are recommending these changes to the zoning ordinance to involve them.
All right. Any council comments or questions?
I will move that we adopt ordinance number 15 dash hole three.
I'll second.
And move in second to adapt this ordinance. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I was skipping item F already, so on to item H, police vehicle replacement.
Chief, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I skipped, I double skipped. Res zoning of properties.
It's a good evening.
Oh, boy. I'm glad somebody's here to help.
This is another issue that the Planning Commission addressed. It was the proposed rezoning of several properties and it really boils down to two, essentially two property owners. The first is several properties that are owned by each senior manager. They're looking at combining those and rezoning those to be all R3 residential. And that would allow for them to perhaps do some future expansion that they may be looking at. Combined with the same, and by the way, rezoning is an ordinance amendment, combined with the same ordinance amendment is the rezoning of property at 1111 Bolswold. And that property is zoned commercial right now, but it is a house. Its future land use planned as mixed use. Not quite sure why it would have been zoned commercial perhaps because we didn't have mixed use language in our ordinance at the time. But the property is for sale at this point in time and banks are a little hesitant to borrow money for property that is zoned commercial because of the requirement in our ordinance that if a home is destroyed at a certain percentage, I think it's 60%, that it being zoned commercial could not be rebuilt as a residence. And so we've added this rezoning onto the senior manager rezoning as well and recommending that it be rezoned to R2. That's consistent with the future land use plan, with the mixed use provisions of the future land use plan. And so, Planning Commission has held a public hearing and is making a recommendation to adopt this amendment.
All right. Thank you. Any council comments or questions concerning item J?
It's kind of weird that 1111 Bolswold is not zoned right at the end, but it just must have been. Because the house is 100 and some years old. So we tend, yeah, so we just moved to them and zoned it in the first place.
I think it was probably because of the adjacent properties to that. Those are commercials.
And when that homeowner bought it, wouldn't it have been...
I think it was rezoned when that owner...
After they owned it.
Yeah. Excellent. Don't try to figure it out.
Okay. They didn't tell the owner. We've been working very closely with the owner. Actually, the owner is here and we've been working very closely with them. And we, quite frankly, didn't spend time trying to figure out why, you know, it was zoned that way. I think we figured out when it was, but we didn't try to figure out why.
Just mix up.
Yeah.
I will move that we adopt ordinance 1505.
I will support. And move in supported to adopt ordinance of 1505. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Now on to H and a police vehicle.
I'm asking forward with the third of our four-year police vehicle replacement plan. You'll recall that we received a grant from Lowell Area Community Fund to fund roughly 100% of the cost that we were facing the first year, 50% the second year, 25% the third year, and then we committed to paying 100% of the air replacement in the fourth year. So we are at the third year in that process. We're asking that we just follow the state bid and purchase the vehicle through the state bid, which is consistent with what we've done in the past. The bid price for the base vehicle is the same as year as it was last year. We purchased the ready-for-road package, which includes lighting, wiring harness, LED spotlight, setup. The total cost of the base package is $29,576. There will be additional equipment that would have to be installed on the vehicle , such as radio, cage, light bar, and computer installation. And that's been budgeted, that's been included in the budget to be adopted.
All right. Thank you.
I move that we go ahead and approve...
I want to say something on this.
All right.
I will, I want to make the statement that I will vote yes on this because there was a grant for it before I took office, but if I wasn't, if it wasn't for that, I would vote no. So I want to do, I want everybody to know, because I just didn't want to vote no on it and then everybody's going to say why. But I am going to say that if it wasn't for the grant, I would vote no, because I think there should have been a pause in between buying four vehicles, boom, 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 right in a row. And then we're going to have to buy four more vehicles. We might have a year off, but boom, 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 they're probably wore out again right in a row. Same old problem. But hopefully, we can get a few more miles out of these than we get out of the, have gotten out of the other ones. But I will make the motion that we buy the vehicle if I could.
Site and shore.
That's a low lady, so.
Sure.
And move in second to buy a police vehicle. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item I is self-tower removal.
We received a single bid. It was from Sinkwave LLC, based in Scotland, Michigan, for removal of the downtown tower of Oak Textelio Cable Building. Under the bid, Sinkwave will remove the tower and keep it for its own use at no cost to the city. And recommend that you approve the bid.
There, after this is all done, there will be, we'll have to do some little maintenance on the building, won't we, to patch in holes and making sure that the environment's safe.
That's part of their bid.
Is that part of their bid?
That's part of their bid, is that they'll pull wires and then they'll patch the holes. And in fact, in some, in our review of the contract, what the other scene, behind the scenes, the City Attorney's been reviewing this proposed agreement that they gave to us, and there are some modifications to that. And part of that was the specifications of what they used to fill the holes.
Can you give me an idea how long it's going to take?
One day.
One day?
Yeah, one day. We were thinking about doing it on July 10.
I'm going to transit it to the department.
Great. On River Walk. River works.
It would be a losing call.
Yeah. So self-tower removal.
And Chief Buclow's been working really hard on this, is that correct?
Steve Buclow, yes. He's been working on, entirely on this.
Trying to get some kind of funding for it. This is the best we can do, is to take it down at no cost.
Yeah.
I know we've been working on it for a while. Thank you. I move that we approve the bid from Sinkwave to take down the tower at no cost to the city.
I will second.
And move in second to take down the tower. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item J, letter of agreement, 318 Lincoln Lake.
A tax review and approval is a letter of agreement, excavating. This is for removal of the structures and vehicles at 318 Lincoln Lake. And this has been a property that has been sitting vacant for quite a long time. I would even say true long of a time. It was destroyed by a fire. There are charges pending against the owners of the property. We have attempted to walk through a process, but it is a very difficult process for us to walk through to have the building removed. We've been working with the bank. We had some prior discussion at a council meeting about removal of the house and cleaning up the property. We have, we are in that stage of the process where we provide a notice to the owners for them to bring it into a safe condition. They have until, I believe, today to bring the property into a safe condition. And if they do not follow through with that, or if they appeal, our declaration that the building is unsafe, then we would have to walk through that appeal process. But in the meantime, if that doesn't happen, then we're asking for your approval of this letter of agreement so that we can work with a contractor to get the, to get the place cleaned up. On top of that, and we'll be talking about this as we fill up details, but there is a local church that is talking with us about the idea of reseeding once the building is removed and reseeding it, putting down some topsoil, reseeding it and trying to make it look nice as well. So that's a very positive thing. You'll have more reporting later on that. But we would need this letter of agreement to prove that it comes as soon as we can move forward. Once that time period is expired. I don't know, Chief has anything he wants to add?
That time period expired today at 5:00 PM. Excellent. That's what I'm going with. We had to wait till midday or? Today at 5:00. End of business today. Perfect. Any council comments?
I move that we approve the letter of agreement, full-on excavating, secure this house on 318 Lincoln Lake.
I will second.
And move in second to take care of the house at 318 Lincoln Lake. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Item K, budget amendment.
We manage revenue expense from various city funds on a regular basis. The City Treasurer and I are constantly watching things. And it appears as though, and we're coming down to the end of the fiscal year, this will be your last meeting before the end of the fiscal year, typically we bring a budget amendment to you. It appears as though everything is tracking, everything is tracking according to budget. You never know what will happen in the next couple of weeks, but I think we're going to be in pretty good shape by all the city funds. One exception is the cable TV fund. And you may recall in our audit last year, and I included in your pack a copy of the page from the audit, that the auditor said that because the cable TV fund is a special revenue fund, we need to adopt a budget for that fund. Adopting a budget doesn't change any decisions that you've made about the fund, doesn't change the, you know, the grant-making process, doesn't have really anything to do with that whole process. It's just that the state requires that you adopt a budget for a special revenue fund. And so what's included is your standard budget amendment resolution, and the only fund that you would be amending is cable TV fund to actually establish a budget for it. And that budget is $110,000, which reflects an estimate of the grant proceeds that would be available. And is that it on budget amendment? Other than that, or future prospects? We look pretty good.
Well, I knew Sue was good. I had no idea she was dissident. Congratulations, then. It's always going to be lucky to end it.
I move that we adopt Resolution 915, budget amendment.
I'll support.
Good. Okay. And move in second to adopt Resolution 915. Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Do we need a roll call on this? I'm sorry. Counselor pardons, go ahead with the roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Thank you.
Clerk is so sharp and just leads right into...
You know it was a great segue into inserting this. As you know, City Clerk Betty Morlock has announced her retirement from the City of Lowell. There will be some opportunities to honor her before she leaves. Her last working day will be July 31st, and certainly she'll be missed. In the meantime, Deputy Clerk Sue Olery has been doing the job of City Clerk for more than a year during Betty's leave of absence. than a year during Betty's leave of absence. She's been trained by Betty for, she's been here for seventeen years, and really trained to be the next person in line. City charter requires appointment of the City Clerk be approved by the council. It's my recommendation that you appoint Sue Olery as the City Clerk. I have no hesitation whatsoever in making that recommendation during the past four years that I've worked with Sue, see, she has been just outstanding in her work with the Planning Commission, picking up new things, just a very, very positive, positive person in the office. Probably, I would say the highlight, though, is with the City Clerk, you really depend on somebody to run elections, and elections is probably the most important thing that a City Clerk does. And during Betty's absence, there were two early elections that needed to be conducted, and she did just a fantastic job, received high marks from Kent County Clerk and other clerks around the area. So, you know, with that, I recommend that you appoint Sue Olery as the City Clerk effective August fourth.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
I would like to make the comment that I think it's nice that we promote people with it, and I hope that that's done in all the departments. I know the police chief sitting over here was one of them. There was a little controversy on that, but we got straightened out. And I know there's some other positions open in the city that there's going to have to be some decisions made about, hopefully that they can be filled with women. So I would like to make the motion that we promote Sue's position.
I will second.
And moved and seconded to support the appointment. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Who did you vote on? I don't know who.
Thank you, Sue.
Congratulations, the City Guards. We're very fortunate.
I think the pauses in order.
That concludes all of our new businesses. Item eight, our various monthly reports from the departments. You're in a packet for review. Any questions or concerns? Moving on then to item nine, council comments. Mr. Mayor.
I have what's written down in my notes on my phone, and I didn't bring my phone tonight. I see there's some of what I was going to say on there. Fire Department sold a nineteen forty-six fire truck that was in service from then until nineteen seventy-one, and been hanging around since then. Finally sold it to a gentleman who does some of the hose testing for us currently. It's more of us a, just a swap and labor type thing. He gets the truck, and we get the hose testing stuff for free for the next three years. It was a really good deal for the firehouse. Everybody was happy about it, and other small little things on, nothing, but that was the biggest thing right there. That was more on my phone than I don't have, so I'll get you another update on that.
There'll be another reading.
Yeah.
All right. And if you, thank you, Sue. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Althoff?
We had a airport meeting, and it was, it was a pretty good meeting. We had, are having a few issues, but I think between Mark and the board, I think the deal would work a lot, and I'll have a better update for you next month. Other than that, everything seems to be going pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Planning Commission, you approved everything that we've been working on, so thanks for Low Lake Recreational Authority, which is basically the trails at this point. There's been a Friends group that's worked on the spring maintenance, and understand the trails look nice. I don't walk the trails, because I don't want to walk the trails. I won't mention that I can't walk the trails, but anyway, I have looked at the pavilion on Foreman, and it looks very nice over that place. Appreciate everybody that works with the Friends group, and that's the former police chief that runs the Friends group, so appreciate those. That would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ellison?
Yes, the Arbor Board did meet. We had some citizens there discussing an overgrown tree in Lafayette, and there'll be some recommendations coming to councilway. But it was nice to have some citizen input on something that was happening in their neighborhood, so recommendation will be coming soon, and I just wanted to say congratulations, Sue. We're very fortunate to have you. You've always been very professional, and you've always got a great smile, and are welcoming you in the city hall, front offices, so certainly appreciate you coming in on it as part of the team and a new aspect.
Thank you very much.
I'll just segue up and say, seventeen years? Is that right?
Master, which is too old.
I knew you'd been around, but that's, that's true. Anyway, Low Lake Power met last week, and highlights from that meeting, if I might. There's, there's some pretty cool big news here. A Valerie Brader, who is the new head of the Michigan Energy Agency, will be in Lowell for Luntworth Rotary and the Chamber of Armors on July fifteenth, and also will be doing a tour of the biodigester, so we'll be looking forward to welcoming the head of the Michigan Energy Agency, so that's a pretty big deal. The American Public Power Association had their two thousand fifteen linemen's rodeo in Sacramento, and our newest lineman, Rich?
Munchel.
Munchel? Something like that. I'm sorry, Rich. With our new lineman, he performed in the, in the linemen's rodeo in Sacramento and did surprisingly, maybe not that surprising, but he did darn well, and in his first rodeo competition, and looks forward to participating in future years. And at that conference, Low Lake Power also received a distinguished APPA RP three award in the top category as a diamond recipient, that sets the highest level, as well as first-place safety award for our category. And then the biodigester continues to struggle getting over the hump of fifty percent capacity. Minor modifications are still being made to get the critters to do what they're supposed to be doing, so a little bacterial issue, but we'll get that squared away. The big issue that the Light Power Board dealt with in the previous month, and then approved at their meeting last week, was modifications and updates to their personnel policy handbook, and that, that was a big deal, and a lot of work went into that, a lot of time, and a lot of effort. I know that their previous meeting adjourned at eleven fifteen P M, and so they went for over four hours. I missed that one. Something about a retirement of Dan Missjarden, and I'm mighty grateful to Dan. But anyway, the Light Power Board put in a lot of work on, on that, and then also Low Lake Power has volunteered again to facilitate as a drop-off point for the food fight, so continuing to be very active in our community as a leader, not only in electricity, but also in community service, so very proud of our friends across the river at Low Lake Power. Chamber of Commerce Board also met briefly last week. It was a good meeting, talking about the sizzling summer concerts, the Riverwalk celebration, and all the activities, some merchant reports, and then there was a short discussion about our traffic rerouting and so forth, and Cliff Yankovic brought to us a heap of interesting pieces of news from the merchants, and that is that Ellis has received more customers than usual, and somebody actually stopped in and talked to Jim Ball and asked him if he had just opened. This was a new business, so. So what, what, I guess the headaches and all of the, it's changed people's pattern, and some of the Westsiders are getting over to the East Side, even though they may not want to.
That's amazing, what happens when you slow down.
Anyway, it, it was an interesting meeting. Wood Memorial Fund did not meet, and so with that, I'm finished. Move on to managers before.
Thank you. The, as I mentioned before, the Kent County Road Commission, they're reporting that the street bridge project is on schedule for July the second. We're hopeful it might be a little before then, but we'll continue to maintain some hope there. And in the meantime, if they do go beyond schedule, as I mentioned, we're doing some contingency planning and thinking about what that means for the community, for Riverwalk Festival and other things. We are making progress on the projects that turned a log from the old maple tree in front of a library into something that can be displayed for the community to enjoy. We had a gentleman come forward that is very interested in this project and taking the leadership role in that, and we're working with him, and potentially the high school, or potentially some students at the high school, so we'll see how that evolves, but we're pretty excited and really thankful that we had the foresight to just save the log, so that's something that could be done with it, and we were able to do that. I will mention that one of the, one of the things about that log is that in order to get it to the mill, we had to split it in half, which required some pretty handy chainsaw work, and our guys at the DPW did a remarkable job of doing that, so they're pretty handy with the chainsaw, we really appreciate it. We were awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Lowly Community Fund for heat and cooling system, replacement and upgrades at the Eagle Heart Public Library, just an update on that. The equipment is on order. We're hopeful to have it in the next couple of weeks, at least by fall, maybe winter, I shouldn't joke about that, but we're hopeful to have that equipment ready to be installed very soon. And then the Lowly Fire Authority was awarded a forty thousand dollar grant from the Lowly Community, that was on your phone.
Yeah. I think, I can defer to that. No, that's good.
A forty thousand dollar grant from the Lowly Community Fund for replacement of the air packs. Total cost of that, I think, is over a hundred and ten thousand, so the communities will need to come up with the additional money. We did include our share of that in the budget that you adopted, including a hundred percent of that, so. Just a reminder that we have a workshop scheduled for June twenty-two at six P M, that's next Monday, and then something I wanted to spend a little bit of time going over with you tonight, and I, and I was hesitant to do it, but you, you got through the agenda so quickly that I, by my calculations, I've got about an hour and fifteen minutes.
Well, thanks.
But actually, I probably would only just take the next fifteen minutes or so. I handed out a copy of the draft strategic plan that we've been working on and updating, and I just wanted to go through that a little bit with you. The first page is obviously the cover, the second page outlines vision, mission values, and strategic focus areas, and then the next page talks about those strategic focus areas, but in more detail, and those detailed bullet points that you have us focus on. And then the next page at the top, it says twenty fifteen sixteen goals, and we had during one of your workshops, a discussion about goals, and divided them into tier one, tier two, and tier three, so we basically have those goals prioritized as well. And your strategic goals report will be changed for your next meeting to reflect these new goals. Then the next few pages, I want to go over some of these items, but these are, these are accomplishments for the organization, and of course, you know, this doesn't happen without all of us working together, and it certainly doesn't happen without all of us working with our community organizations as well. I'm not going to read all of these, but there are many that I, that I do want to just read and talk about, and feel free to ask questions if you have any of them, but, you know, we, we had proactive communication with the neighborhood impacted by the Hudson Street Bridge Project. We actually sent a letter out to them ahead of time to let them know that that project was coming. We hosted a Lowly Community Chamber of Commerce ambassadors for breakfast. We worked with the Wood Memorial Committee and the Grand Rapids Foundation on an agreement to transfer a portion of the wood assets to the foundation to improve investment returns. We developed an educational session for the Planning Commission on my end. We worked with M.D.O.T. and Kent County Road Commission for four-way stop during this bridge closing project. We approved a new agreement with Kent County for dispatch services. We held a tabletop exercise that was coordinated with Kent County Emergency Management, this was last spring, to review our procedures for handling a flood, because we were one year out of the flood, and so we wanted to just kind of go through a tabletop exercise again and sort of review our, our process for that. We worked with Grand Valley Metro Council and M.D.O.T. to reclassify Jefferson Fremont Monroe as federal aid roads. On the next page, each page is, focuses on a, on a specific, one of the five strategic focus areas, and so that was on community collaboration in the area of government efficiency and effectiveness. We made various updates to the court ordinances on accessory buildings, mixed-use fireworks. The updates that you did tonight would be included in those. We adopted a balanced budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We increased the standard and force financial bond rating to an A plus. We negotiated a collective bargaining agreement with the I B W, including that. We negotiated a contract extension and a two percent increase with the F O P, and the I B W is pending on that issue. We hired a DPW director, and then we hired an interim DPW director. We hired a water distribution supervisor, and also recall that we work with the Michigan Water Association, they have a backup plan in case we were not able to find some, we saw a fantastic individual, Jeff Van Siders, who has actually just completed his six-month probationary period plan. We completed and updated the public works equipment replacement plan. We replaced an aging backhoe as, as part of that. We completed the requirements for updating the MPDES permit, which is the permit we're required to have with the State of Michigan to discharge into the flood river, the waste of water treatment plan. If I got that right, or pretty close to being right, question one. We conducted an analysis of sewer operations in-house compared to contracting. We worked with the American Legion to restore the Civil War cannon. We completed a wireless project connecting city buildings into a central network. We replaced, did some work at city hall, we replaced carpet in the police department as substantial savings. This is the federal surplus where we're able to purchase, in this case, we're able to purchase surplus carpet, and there was actually a lot of in-house work done by the police officers and chief, and tearing up the old carpet and moving the cubicles and that kind of stuff, so really saved a lot of money, and it looks very nice now in the police department. We completed a water reliability study. The reliability study is something that we have to do on, I think it's a five-year rotating cycle, where engineers look at how reliable our water system is, and then they make recommendations on future improvements. Do I have that roughly correct, Mr. Woods? And then they, we had to schedule then future improvements to the system to increase the reliability of it. Kind of combined with that, we updated the water fund capital improvement plan to match the reliability study, so we have a long-term plan that matches that study. We replaced water filters at the water treatment.